Okay. Good evening, welcome to Harrisburg City Council's legislative session. Today is Tuesday, May 12, 2020. I am calling this meeting to order at 6 o'clock PM. Mr. Petrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allott.
Present.
Ms. Bowers. Ms. Daniels.
Present.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Mattson.
Here.
Mr. Majors. Ms. Williams.
Here, thank you, Mr. Petrowski. Mr. Mattson, I mean, Mr. Majors is excused tonight. Uh, he has work issues that he has to deal with this evening. We'll move on to the invocation, Ms. Green, please.
Thank you, President Williams. Um, during these trying times, I think we should all take a moment of silence for all those who have been affected by the pandemic, including ourselves, because we've all been impacted in some way. Um, I'd also like to ti- uh, take the time to count our blessings, um, for all that we do have during this time, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Moving on to the pledge of allegiance, Mr. Allott.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God, indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice.
Thank you, Mr. Allott. Did you forget the words?
I did, how's that happen?
Okay. We're moving on to under communications tonight, council members. Uh, Mayor Patton first. And I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam President, for allowing me the opportunity to, uh, address, uh, an unfortunate turn of events from this past week, in which we had, uh, two county commissioners in Dauphin County, and indeed, uh, a number of Republican commissioners from other counties, issue statements that they were prepared to move, uh, their counties, uh, from the red stage, which is where we currently are, to a yellow stage, uh, uh, which would allow for more things to reopen. Uh, they were, uh, stating that they were prepared to do this, uh, regardless of the recommendations of the Department of Health, and regardless of the authority of the governor. I know it is, uh, your position and my position, and indeed, the positions of, uh, everyone in Harrisburg, that we should follow the Department of Health's guidelines. Um, we believe that that is, uh, not only the right thing to do, but it is, uh, based on science and statistics, and it allows us to put at the forefront of our decision-making, the health and safety of our residents. Uh, I have spoken to, uh, uh, at least one of the commissioners, and I do not believe that, uh, they are going to actually move forward tomorrow, with the threat to take Dauphin County to yellow. But even if they do, uh, uh, we will not recognize that, and the governor will not recognize that, and the city will remain in the red phase. I know that everyone is eager, uh, to get back to work and to have the city reopen. Uh, but we have to, we have to let science guide us, we have to go slow, and we have to work collectively on this issue to make sure that we don't have a relapse that, uh, ends up, uh, uh, having us backslide even further and causing additional, uh, loss of life and harm. So, I know I speak for all of us when I say that we believe, uh, in the governor's, uh, uh, decisions, uh, making power. We believe in the Department of Health, and we believe in following those guidelines, which I think have been wisely issued for Pennsylvania. Um, that's the position of Harrisburg, that also happens to be the position of, uh, York and Lancaster and other cities, uh, amidst, uh, uh, the central PA counties, and we will continue to, uh, follow that path. And it's unfortunate, because I think people, uh, may have been confused by, by those statements, and I, I, I don't think it's the right time to, uh, play politics with, uh, public safety and the health and welfare of our constituents. So, uh, the message to everyone is that we're going to continue to work together and focus on putting health and welfare first. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome, Mayor. Thank you very much. Moving on, uh, council members, uh, I think Ms. Cheryl Abad-Ford, are you with us this evening?
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't sure if you could, or maybe I was muted. Yes, good evening, would you like to report?
Yes, we would, thank you very much.
Yes. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening, um, on behalf of Impact Harrisburg. Uh, I wanted to just give a brief report on the Neighborhood Business Stabilization Program. What I'd like to report is that on Saturday, uh, we sent notices to 313 businesses in the city of Harrisburg that they were receiving a check in the amount of $5,000. Um, and that, um, um, the, uh, response has been overwhelming, um, to say the least, meaning that, um, I have received, um, I have received, um, just a myriad of, of emails, um, too numerous to count, I'm looking at some of them now, that, um, conveyed their, the thanks of people for this joint partnership between the city of Harrisburg and Impact Harrisburg. Uh, today, there, of course, was a press conference, at which three of the, um, the owners of the businesses, of three businesses who had received, uh, $5,000 grants, uh, were there to talk about just how they will use the grants. Um, one example is, um, Angel Fox, who has a, uh, laundromat that she purchased, uh, recently, and is, she's on Market Street, and she talked about how the additional funding will enable her to help residents who actually, um, um, well, first of all, with some of her, um, to buy a new, um, new washing machine, but also to, just for, to help other residents in the, in the, in the community who are struggling, um, to just do basic things like get their clothes cleaned. And that's important for essential workers. You have to maintain, um, clean clothing, um, they have to go in and out daily to jobs that are, uh, labor-intensive. So, that was one person who spoke, we had two other individuals who spoke, and, um, I think that, uh, the, um, the reception shows a great deal of, um, I think gratitude to you, um, to Impact Harrisburg, but also just a, a great deal of fortitude and a sense that we are in this together. These are very unfortunate circumstances in which we, and times in which we find ourselves. I'd like to also mention that the list of companies, of organizations, both for-profit and nonprofit, um, is, um, really representative of the diversity of our larger community, and, um, we will be, uh, we are moving very quickly. Um, we will be getting information out to you all, um, that really does talk about the degree to which we had a diverse applicant pool. Remember, this was based on eligibility. As one of our, um, um, the successful applicants indicated, uh, what she loved was that it wasn't a competitive grant. It wasn't a grant where she, um, felt that she was in competition with someone else. This was based on eligibility. And I know that, uh, we're a small community, and that the word has spread about this. There are a couple of other things I'd like to say. First is that, uh, the 313, um, represents about, I have my numbers here, I don't want to get my math wrong. It's about 1.1.565. So, it's, uh, 1,565,000. You will recall that we said we would, um, go up to, uh, 350 grants. You will also recall that we have a waitlist, because we closed, um, the, um, the, we didn't close the portal, but we, we had to close essentially the, uh, the pool, although people were still permitted to, um, send in applications in the event there was additional funding. Um, we, we closed, um, the, the, um, the pool for this, for this funding round, and, um, but we said we would take it up to 350. So, what we need to do is really, um, a- after we get through this week, think about how we will manage, um, the, uh, the delta, the difference between, um, the, um, you know, 350 and 313. Um, and so that's, um, we have some other, um, so we have to do that. Uh, but you should know that we will be getting giving out checks tomorrow. We will give out checks tomorrow. We will give out checks Thursday, and we will issue checks on Friday. A number of people have appropriately opted, um, to have their checks mailed to them. In order to have the check mailed to them, they have a certification, they must return to us, and a copy of a valid identification. And so, we are getting those requests in, because we don't want to put anyone at risk. Uh, we will practice, um, um, significant social distancing, and, um, we will, um, begin at 10:30 AM, 11 o'clock tomorrow morning, to, um, we have, um, we have segments of 25, and we go from, um, the letter A to the letter M. So, that's the process we are using. You should also know, um, that we do have, um, a list, what we call, um, a list of cures, people or organizations who might have been missing some information, and we have them on a list, um, so that we can move through that list to ensure that they, um, have all the proper credentials, or if they don't, then that we need to, um, notify them as well, that, um, they have not made it into this round of funding. So, we are, um, moving in a deliberate, um, linear fashion. It is a lot of work. Um, I'd like to mention that we have, in many respects, though, served as an exemplar for, um, um, many, um, as a model across the state. This is what I'm hearing from, um, from DCD and from other places, that the program we have has been replicated in, um, municipalities across the state, and also in some other states. Uh, we were one of the first to hit the ground running with this. And I, um, overall, I feel very good about what we're doing. Um, we're keeping close lists, we're checking them more than twice. I mean, we're, we're, we're really doing a good job of going through the list, that's what happens in these processes. You continue to vet, and you vet again, and you move through the list. So, I want people who are in our community, who might not yet have heard from us, to know that we are still moving through the list. Um, we are being very careful about that process, but we honored our pledge to really provide significant notice to the larger community within the timeframe that we had. It was aggressive, but we are moving through. I'd be happy to take any questions. Um, I'd like to thank you all for your cooperation, and for your trust in us, and to say that, um, I would like for you to see the letters of, of great support. There was one letter from a gentleman who said that his company had been here for a number of years, and he had to lay off four city residents, and he was looking forward to the opportunity to rehire them. There was another letter where the man just said, "I accept," as if I had given him a wedding proposal. So, there, I've had a couple of different letters. So, at that point, I'd like to turn it back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Uh, council members, uh, is there any questions, Ms. Green, is there any questions?
No, I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you very much. Um, I'm excited to see how these, uh, grants really help our, our small businesses to endure this epidemic and come out on the other side, um, still able to serve our community.
Thank you.
Ms. Daniels.
Um, no, just from the application pool, did you get a sense of, um, which industries were hit harder than others, or, um, or, you know, where the losses were greater? And, uh, obviously, you weren't prepared to answer that, but if you can estimate, that would be.
Ms. Daniels, would you repeat the first part of the question? One of the things I was scrolling through, and so I didn't see you when you were asking, I apologize.
No, just if you have the ability to estimate, um, kind of a sense of what you saw in terms of the applicant pool, in terms of what industries were really harshly hit, which ones weren't as harshly hit, um, you know.
Restaurants. Sure. Restaurants were, um, it really, it really, I would say, it ran the gamut. Um, you know, there were some businesses that were more, um, obviously noticeable than others. Uh, we received a fair number from daycare centers, and, um, and it was interesting to see where they were located, because their location told you something about, um, who might be sending their children there. So, if you were a central worker, you might have your children in a particular daycare. And so, it was, so, from that demographic standpoint, it was very interesting, and we do have some data that we are updating, and I promise you, we will get that to you, that shows you just how, um, how that, um, sort of what I would call demographic, from a job standpoint, data, how it, um, how it is structured across the city. What I did notice that the applications did come in from across the city. Um, I wish we could have funded every app, application. I mean, you know, all of the, the ones that we received that, that met the eligibility. And, um, it, it is just, um, I, you, you just need to hear the, um, the heartfelt sense of, of just wanting to, one person said, "We just want to stay here." You know, "We're going to, we're going to stick it out." Those kinds of stories, uh, were heard again and again and again. I, I have also gotten phone calls from a couple of folks who, um, for some reason, they didn't get their email, and, um, when I told them they were on the list, I mean, there were tears of joy. Um, so, it's really, um, it's, it's across the gamut. Some were more established, some were, you know, less established, some were very, very small. Barbe shops, um, not a lot of beauty parlors, but some, um, and, um, a, a few construction companies. And so, it really did, as I said, it ran the gamut, uh, print shops. I could, you know, it was so, it really, I think the list is one that is, um, in my view, it's impressive. It showed a great deal of diversity, and I think that for, for the future, as we pull that together, you know, we're sprinting now to get the checks out, because people need money. But as we pull this list together, and we give it all over to you, I think that, meaning the city council, I think you will, you will find it very interesting. These are, these are your constituents, you know, so, I mean, it's, it's big.
Yeah. Was there an industry that you personally were su- was surprised was in the city, that you didn't know was in the city before?
There were a few, um, there are a lot of industries in the city that I didn't know were here. The, and, and in point of fact, there were a lot. And, um, we are a very diverse city, and we have a lot to be proud of and a lot to build on. So, I, I come away with a sense of great pride and humility.
Um, that's it for me, thank you for your work.
Thank you. Ms. Bowers.
Thank you, President Williams. Thank you, Ms. Ford, I look forward to the, uh, full written report, but I do have a few questions. Um, I wanted to know how many businesses applied in general?
Yep. So, we had, uh, close to, I want to say, 400 or more. Okay, I need to, and I will provide that in my report, but it was over, I would say, over 400.
Okay. And follow-up questions, so, those that were deemed unqualified, or that did not receive, um, funding during this first round, will they have an opportunity to reapply, or they sort of missed their, their opportunity there?
Well, you know, we closed, and, uh, April, about April 24th, we decided at about 5 o'clock to 6 o'clock PM, because we had had an overwhelming number of applications to, uh, to continue deceiving them, but we could not consider them for this round. And I cannot remember candidly, in terms of the sequence of when I last talked to you, whether or not I mentioned that. But that was a decision we needed to make, because the response was so overwhelming. Um, since that time, uh, we are, first of all, as I said, we are, Councilwoman Daniels, uh, we are Bowers, rather, we are, we are, um, we're looking at that list to see if anyone on that list, in the cure file, who, who applied before we closed down the, um, this, this side of that round funding, okay, this current round, if there are any ones in that, in that, in that pool, who should be receiving, um, a, a grant. So, we're going through that list to determine eligibility, and we have to be very methodical about, as you know, I, I, you know, I, I acknowledge and recognize that you're saying you understand that. And then we'll see how many we have. So, we'll be doing that this week, as we, um, in between giving out the awards that, of, of the ones who are currently on the list. And then we'll see if we are up to our number. Um, in terms of what we do, uh, for another round, I think that's a discussion that needs to be had, um, that's, uh, with, perhaps with, um, with, with you, with the mayor, and, um, and with my board. Um, I have, uh, I don't have any clear sense of how my board would like to proceed. Um, I know that there has been some discussion on, on your side of using CBDG funds to, um, underwrite, um, a second round, and if that's the case, that means that the underwriting criteria, the eligibility criteria, would be, um, a bit different. And what we would, I think, have to do is, um, is to ask those who were not funded in this round to reapply, because we would have a different set of criteria. And so, but ours, it would, it would look a bit like what we did in the first round, excuse me. Uh, but it would also, um, include some of the additional criteria that are, uh, necessary for a CDBG, uh, funding, um, process. I do know that Allentown, I think Redding, and maybe Chester and some other communities are using some of their CDBG COVID funds for programs that look like ours. I know that because, um, through the grapevine, and, um, through that network that municipalities have, that, uh, you are all aware of. I've heard that, and I've seen some of their applications. So, I know, and I know that they've talked to our compliance consultant about that. So, it seems to me that there would be an opportunity, if there were a second round of funding, to take those, um, applicants who did not receive funding and fold them in through a, a reapplication process to that, to that funding source. It, it was a long explanation, but it was necessary, because it's a, it's a process, and it, it really requires us to be linear. It's not cha- it's not difficult, but you have to just, you know, take each step, and it's, and it's, um, and it's, um, one by one. You have to do everything in a very linear fashion.
Sure. No, thank you for clarifying. So, again, I, to the written report, thank you for all your work, and I emulated that, um, 313. I hope we meet 350, and maybe even off 400 would be, would be, so, thank you again.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Allott.
Sheila, and I, I apologize if you covered this, I was trying to jot some notes as you were talking, but what were perhaps something that would have disqualified somebody from consideration for the loan at this point? Like, what are some of the criteria that maybe, um, you, you use as you're making that decision?
Yes. So, um, um, if they had, um, annual gross, um, receipts, or an annual gross revenue that exceeded $1 million. Um, if they lived, if their business was outside the city limits. And as you know, our city, um, municipal boundaries are coterminous, that, the same as the school district. So, we've had to vet for those kinds of factors. Those are two very, um, straightforward ones. Um, in some instances, we've had, um, we, we, we had to do a lot of vetting around those two factors. Um, those are the two most obvious ones. Um, some of the others were less obvious. We had to, we had to delve more deeply into, um, what was going on with some of the applications, but those were just what I would call the one-offs.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have right now.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mattson.
Uh, hi, thank you for that. Uh, really appreciate you letting us know, uh, how, what some of the folks, uh, applied for in terms of the type of businesses that they are. Really excited to hear that we can support and help childcare, I'm a big champion of affordable childcare for essential employees in this time. Um, and other piece I'd just like to add is sometimes we get some pushback in regards to our mercantile tax, and sometimes businesses say, "Well, what's the incentive of being a business in the city if we have to pay something like a mercantile tax?" And this shows you, through our innovation and work here, um, one incentive for doing a business in the city is that we're compassionate about our small businesses in our community, and we'll try to support them in times of crisis.
I would, yes, you're welcome, thank you. I think that's a good point. Um, each business, one of the eligibility criteria, uh, was that you had to have a business mercantile tax. And that's something that we can talk about later, I think it was absolutely necessary. And candidly, we had to do some education around that. We worked with, uh, with your economic, the, the city's Economic Development Department around that, just letting businesses know that they really need to have a mercantile tax. Um, and, um, and it, and you know, I, I, the best word to use is, it was just interesting. But it was also interesting, um, to, um, to see how many people knew that, and were, were absolutely compliant. So, overall, it was a very positive, I, I feel very good about this.
That's great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that all, Mr. Mattson?
That's it for me, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you, Ms. Ford. Um, I just have a couple of questions, and, um, my first is that, um, I think we, we need to do a better job to explain to the applicants that, uh, uh, the business has to be located in this, in the city limits. I think a lot of our applicants, uh, were of the, um, I guess, maybe they thought that they lived in the PA, because their zip codes was 17104, but it was outside of the city limits. So, I think we need to do a good job of educating them about how and where the city line is divided at. I did have a concern about, uh, some of those who were on the list who did not have, uh, license permits, and have you taken that opportunity to make sure that they, that they, um, apply for those permits, and that they receive those permits?
Every, uh, council, President Williams, every applicant who is receiving a grant should have a license permit, and, um, if they did not at the time that they applied, they should have cured that by working with the city and getting that permit. As of today, I was actually, this was not someone who was on the list, but I was working with a, a company that wanted to be on the list to get that, that mercantile license. So, um, you know, the reality is that, um, when one engages in this kind of activity, you're right, you have to do a lot of educating at the same time, um, a, a lot of that, at the same time, um, that you are, um, sort of processing, um, the applications. And I think that, uh, that's where vetting, and vetting again, and it, and you know, you, the continuous, once again, that iterative process of continuous vetting helps a lot. And we're not done, we have to continue doing that.
Well, I thank you for, you know, vetting several times, I understand that you did vet several times, but as of late last night, as I was here in city chambers, council chambers, there were 17 who did not apply for their license permit, and it was eight who did not, or were not current on their tax. So, that is under mine as well. So, have you done that research, and have you done that investigation to make sure that that's done before you, uh, allocated the checks to them, or disseminated the checks to them?
I haven't disseminated, oh, let me respond, I haven't disseminated a check to anybody.
Okay. Well, I know you're doing it tomorrow morning.
I haven't disseminated a check, I have lists, and everything that we do.
Okay.
Gets cross-checked against the list.
Okay.
So, now, what I would, what I would say is.
You used to tell me last night, there was 17 without license permit, there was eight that were not current on their taxes, two were outside of the city limits. So, I'm asking you, have you vetted the list today, and looked for those type of particulars?
And my, and my response is the following, that we work with your city solicitor around ensuring that anyone who will, uh, receive a grant award, to the best of our, uh, ability and knowledge, has complied with all of the eligibility criteria. I think we've done a good job, and I will, uh, defend that. Um, what we are not doing is, um, and I say this, uh, with a bit of mirth, is giving, um, um, grants to phantom applicants, and, uh, we are really moving through, or, uh, people who no longer are with us. Uh, we are trying to, in our best way, move through in a very deliberate way, um, redoing that list. Now, with respect to, I'd like to turn, though, to the 17 you mentioned, because we do plan to begin giving out checks, because that's what we're doing, that's the objective. Now, for that list, I will go through that list, and anyone I talked about, President Williams, that suspense file we have, and that curif- and that curfew file, anyone who falls onto that list gets vetted again. And then they get vetted again. And then they get vetted again until we are sure that they can, we can release um that uh check to them. Now, in terms of taxes, uh we said that we were not looking. That was not an eligibility criteria or criterion. So that is not a um a one, a factor that would defeat the application process. And so, but we moved through, I want to be clear about this, with every applicant um that process, and we've done so. And I have to say that the city solicitor and um your economic development team, they have been um very good partners in that process. So it doesn't mean that it's perfect, but it means that it's very good.
We're gonna have some snags in the processes. The first time we've done anything of that nature, this type of program. And certainly, I commend you for all the hard work you've done in in the short period of time that you had to do it. I'm just want to ensure that all of our city residents who own the business owners are first prioritized. And also want to make sure that if it's not a criteria that you encourage them to please get their, be current on their taxes and get those mercantile permits. We are not. I'm sorry, are you, were you gonna say something?
I said, yes.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. And that's the only thing. I think it's a wonderful program. I'm encouraged by of of how many applicants have came out, and I encourage other applicants to please come out uh when we start disseminating the money from the federal government that we receive. Of course, I don't know if you're aware of the fact that Mark um Woolery, who is our business administrator, let us uh know that we are, we did receive one point five million dollars from the federal government. And five hundred thousand of that will go to those businesses within the city. And the criteria is going to be somewhat a little bit different from what you asked.
Right.
So I encourage everyone to please apply for that. Because I know these are, you know, circumstances and times financially, these businesses are really going down under, and I want them to be encouraged that the city of Harrisburg is here to help them. But I want to make sure that our residents are prioritized, who own the businesses within the city limits.
Councilwoman, President Williams, I would um affirm everything you just said. And I would um also say that um it lines up directly with um the joint partnership between Impact Harrisburg and the City of Harrisburg. I don't see any divergence. I think it is good. And I think that um I would only add that um I think you all need to take pride in the fact that we were among the first in the country, and certainly the first among the smaller cities to do anything like this, anything like it. That's pretty extraordinary. It means that people watch you closely, okay? And that's okay. But it also means that because of that, that, you know, Impact Harrisburg and the city saw the need and said, we're going to do something. And now we have a second opportunity because of the COVID nineteen CDBG funds. That's pretty extraordinary.
Okay. You should.
Thank you.
You should be commended as well because you yourself have worked very hard with your board. And you've been up two and three hours in the evening trying to make sure that uh you looked at the applications and vetted them. And I understand that because you've not been in conversation. So I commend you for that. What a wonderful job. And it's really good that City Harrisburg is up on the map and in a better light than we were eight years ago when we were on the map financially stressed. So thank you very much. Forward to working with you this time and make sure that any assistance, myself and Ms. Bowers, who will be gladly uh accessible to help you during this second round, the second phase that we're gonna go through.
Thank you.
Anything else, council members? Thank you, Ms. Ford, and I look forward to to seeing and talking with you in the future.
Thank you. May I sign off now?
You may certainly.
President Williams, really quick, I think Neil um Grover had, city solicitor had a comment. He had his hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you, Miss Hughes, Mr. Grover. Mr. Grover.
Madam President, Sheila answered the question.
Okay.
There was a question on the criteria and she she got there, so.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Grover. Thank you, Ms. Ford.
You're welcome. I'm going to find the way to sign off and sign off. Thank you.
Moving on, uh Mr. Petraskey. At this time, is there anyone who would like to speak to council or has an initial question?
Yeah, we did receive one public comment from Ms. Ramo. Um Ms. Carleen Ramo lives on the twenty uh two thousand block of Kensington Street. And she wrote, she has a concern about public safety in the alleyway of her property. There has been a gunshot last month and in the back, and she asked if we could please send more patrol at night.
Did you happen to get a phone number from Ms.?
I have her, I have her email address.
Her information?
Yes.
Okay. Uh Ms. Ms. Green, did you hear that information? And will you get back with her, please?
Yes, oh, President Williams, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Petraskey. Let her know that Ms. Green, who is our public safety chair, will get back with her concerning her issues. Okay, thank you, Mr. Petraskey. Moving on to uh proof of minutes. Council members, have you had an opportunity to look at the approval legislative session minutes of April twenty eighth, two thousand twenty? At this time, is there any omissions, deletions, or corrections? Please designate so. If not, they will stand as approved. We will move on, we move on to reports of committees. Report from Chair Allen on the work session of May fifth, two thousand twenty. Mr. Allen, are you ready for your report?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Just bring up the information right in front of me. Give me one second here. Yes, at uh last week's work session, we discussed Resolution twenty seven of two thousand twenty. And this is a resolution uh that would engage in a contract with Conrad Segal to perform actuarial services consisting of an OPEB valuation as required by the Government Accounting Standards Board. Um so this is a uh a very specific contract. It's actually a very niche one. Um so Conrad Segal is a local provider that does just that. The maximum value of the contract is seventeen thousand dollars. It cannot exceed that. Um and the contract will be in effect until December thirty first of this year. Um so I recommend my colleagues to vote in the affirmative for this resolution. And that concludes my report about the resolution in my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. We'll move on to report from Chair Bowers on the work session of May fifth, two thousand twenty. Ms. Bowers, are you ready with your report?
Yes, I am. Thank you, President Williams. Building and Housing Committee met on Tuesday, May fifth, two thousand twenty during the council work session to discuss Resolution seventeen of two thousand twenty. Resolution seventeen of two thousand twenty authorizes the City of Harrisburg to enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission for the city's participation in the certified local government program. Frank Grunbein, historical preservation specialist and archivist, provided an overview of the agreement on behalf of the city. Uh Mr. Grunbein reiterated two important points. There's no financing required to carry out the agreement. And the agreement will remain in effect indefinitely until either party would like to terminate. Um at that time, written notification would be required within thirty days. This includes my report. I would encourage my colleagues to uh support Resolution seventeen.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Now moving on to report from Chair Daniels on the work session of May fifth, two thousand twenty. Ms. Daniels, are you ready with your report?
Uh yes, I am. Um on on May fifth, uh Parks and Rec, um met to discuss uh forget the res- Resolution twenty nine. Um and that's basically a contract between the City of Harrisburg and um and the Capital Area Green Belt Association. Um our portion of the contract is worth thirty thousand dollars. Um the Green Belt Association will contribute an additional ten thousand dollars. And combined those service, those funds will go to um making sure that um fallen trees and debris is removed from our streams, um remove invasive species and controlling their their growth. Um and maintaining restoration sites and um and repairing uh disturbed areas. So um the con- the cost of the service that um our green belt area will receive is forty thousand dollars. The city will only be responsible for thirty thousand dollars of it. Um and um it's a great project, especially now that our residents are using our green spaces and we need to be using our green spaces. So I would urge my uh colleagues to vote yes in support of this contract. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels. Moving on to report from Chair Mattson on the work session of May fifth, two thousand twenty. Mr. Mattson, are you ready with your report?
Yes, I am. On uh May fifth, um during the city council work session, the Community and Economic Development Committee received a presentation of CDBG funds, uh neighborhood business funds uh related to COVID nineteen funding, the COVID COVID nineteen initiative. Um businesses administrator Mark Woolley and Lily Williams with DBHD gave a presentation and overview how of over how an additional one million, one hundred and fifty two thousand, nine hundred and seventy seven dollars will be allocated. Uh the city will utilize um the CDBG funding in the following ways. Bored in twenty two thousand dollars, three hundred and eighty two dollars for grants for public services that prevent and repair or respond to COVID nineteen. Uh the fifteen percent cap on public services is is suspended for the C CDBG Cares Act grant. Five hundred thousand for the mayor's office of economic development with small business loans uh to provide direct financial assistance to small businesses in Harrisburg. And then two hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and ninety five dollars for administrative purposes. Um. The City of Harrisburg, under the posi- positions of the Cares Act, held a public comment period from May fifth to May twelfth. Uh the plan can be downloaded and reviewed from the city's Bureau of Building and Housing webpage. Uh next, the Community and Economic Development Committee discussed Resolution ten. Resolution ten uh was a resolution approving a preliminary preliminary and final subdivision and land development plan submitted by Tarek Castile on behalf of TLC Cornerstone Renewal LP to develop five lots as a residential project featuring twenty four multifamily dwelling units and twenty six individual townhomes, as well as a community center and garden on the one hundred block of North Fifteenth Street. Uh Planning Director Knight gave an overview of the land development plan and went over uh input from the Planning Commission. Uh the applicant discussed the project as well. Some of the highlights were that the applicant is focused on mentoring smaller local contractors. Uh the applicant will be working and coordinating with nonprofits using HUD guidelines uh to determine the cost of affordable housing. And overall, my colleague seems in support of the measure. And given that it is in compliance with all the rules and regulations of the city, and I believe is a good thing for that area of the city, uh I encourage my colleagues about an affirmation of the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Mattson.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on for ordinance for first reading. We have none this evening. Ordinance for amendment, we have none. And ordinance for final passage, we have none. Moving on to resolutions.
Madam President.
Yes.
We have um an ordinance for first reading.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We do. We do. I'm sorry. Bill six of two thousand twenty. I looked at the wrong agenda. Did you read that into record for me, please, Mr. Petraskey?
Yes. Bill six of twenty twenty is an ordinance vacating and striking from the official map of the City of Harrisburg. A portion of North Ninth Street between Market Street and Walnut Street and the portion of Walnut Street between North Ninth Street and North Tenth Street pursuant to chapter three dash one oh nine of the codified ordinances of the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you, Mr. Petraskey. We will place that in Community and Economic Development Committee. Moving on for resolutions, would you read Resolution ten of two thousand twenty into record, please, Mr. Petraskey?
Yes, Resolution ten of twenty twenty. It's a resolution approving the preliminary final subdivision and land development plan submitted by Tarek Castile on behalf of TLC Cornerstone Renewal LP to develop five lots as a residential project featuring twenty four multifamily dwelling units and twenty six individual townhomes, as well as a community center and garden on the one hundred block of North Fifteenth Street.
Mr. Mattson and council members, are there any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the vote, Mr. Petraskey.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution ten passes.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Majors, and and welcome. Good evening. On to Resolution seventeen, two thousand twenty. Mr. Petraskey, please read that into record.
Sure. Resolution seventeen of twenty twenty is a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission for the city's participation in the certified local government program.
Ms. Bowers and council members, are there any additional questions or comments?
Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Majors? Or Mr. Mattson, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution seventeen passes.
Thank you very much. Please read Resolution twenty seven into record, please.
Resolution twenty seven of twenty twenty is a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into professional services agreement with Conrad Segal to perform actuarial services consisting of an OPEB valuation as required by the Government Accounting Standards Board Statement number seventy five.
Mr. Allen and council members, are there any additional questions or comments on the resolution? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Ms. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution twenty seven passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution twenty nine.
Resolution twenty nine of twenty twenty is a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to award funding in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand to the Capital Area Green Belt Association for the performance of maintenance on city-owned land in the Capital Area Greenbelt.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels and council members. Are there any additional questions or comments? Please call the vote, Mr. Petraskey.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Ms. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution twenty nine passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution thirty two.
Resolution thirty two of twenty twenty is a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to PA Walkworks to fund citywide mapping of bicycle lanes and facilities and to conduct an analysis of bicycle traffic impacts and needs to assist with the development of an active transportation plan.
That will be placed in Parks and Recreation Committee. Moving on to Resolution thirty three.
Resolution thirty three of twenty twenty is a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Department of Community and Economic Development's Greenways, Trails, and Recreation Program to help fund the construction of two spray parks to replace two aging pools.
That also will be placed in Parks and Recreation Committee. Moving on to Resolution thirty four, two thousand twenty.
Resolution thirty four of twenty twenty is a resolution ratifying certain CDBG and ESG subrecipient agreements entered into by the City of Harrisburg in order to distribute CDBG and ESG funding to eligible subrecipient organizations.
Mr. Majors, you were not here at caucus. Uh is there any additional questions or amendments you would like to see with that resolution?
Uh I have none at this time.
Okay. None, no other question or comments? Please call the vote, Mr. Petraskey.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels? Ms. Daniels?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution thirty four passes.
Moving on to Resolution thirty five.
Resolution thirty five of twenty twenty is a resolution approving a substantial amendment to the City of Harrisburg two thousand nineteen to twenty twenty annual action plan and twenty eighteen to twenty twenty two consolidated plan to incorporate new activities and funding to respond to the COVID nineteen pandemic is provided by uh for by the Cares Act.
That will be placed in Community and Economic Development. Moving on to old business council members, are there any old business at this time? Moving on to new business. Is there any new business at this time?
Yes, Madam President.
Okay, Ms. Bowers?
Thank you. Just in order, I wanted to remind everyone that the City of Harrisburg will be updating their website very soon. The new website will include improvement. The new website will include improvements in page structure, layout and design. The new website will improve navigation and the overall user experience, but we need residents feedback. Um there is a website redesign survey, if you could please take a few minutes to um. Complete the survey, it's due by Friday, May fifteenth.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bowers. Any other new business? I just want to take this opportunity to encourage all residents again to please go on Department of State's website. VotesPA.com and ask and request for a mail-in application to vote. Voting is June second, two thousand twenty, the last day to apply. Is May twenty sixth, two thousand twenty for your application. Now, there's a phone number, which is eight seven seven eight six eight three seven seven two. For those who do not have a computer, you may call that number and request a mail-in application. Please have it in by May twenty sixth of two thousand twenty for the June second, two thousand twenty primary. Any additional new business, council members? Hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Meeting is officially adjourned, thank you all and have a good evening.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, have a good evening.